I'd like to call the February 6th meeting of the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors to order. Ms. Steele, will you call the roll?
Mr. Gibson.
Here.
Dr. Orff.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Hudson.
Here.
Mr. Crisco.
Here.
Mr. Bizani is absent, and Mr. Nkoshia.
Here.
Could you all join me in the invocation by Pastor Dr. Robert McTurnell and the pledge of allegiance by the reigning Little Miss Daffodil, Kate Hunter?
Good evening, board members. Would you pray with me? Heavenly Father, we thank you. We thank you for the day that you've given to us. We thank you for the opportunity and freedom to gather in this place tonight. We thank you for the leaders that you've brought forth to serve our county. As they serve, Lord, we ask you to impart to them a blessing that they may not even realize that they need right now, that you would grant to them strength to carry the burden of leadership you've entrusted to them, that you would protect them from discouragement, exhaustion, disillusionment. Lord, even now, we ask that as they gather together to discuss and decide on business matters pertaining to our home, that you would lead them in wisdom, grant them peace in their decisions, and joy for the privilege of service that they've been given. We give you thanks and look to you for your sustaining presence today and for all of ours tomorrow's. For your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from September 19th.
Sub moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is the adoption of the agenda.
Sub moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the consent agenda?
Sub moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is matters presented by the board. Dr. Orff?
Yeah. Well, as the board knows, and to make the public aware, the Superintendent of Schools asked board members to be principal of the day, and some of the board members participated in the program. Mr. Crisco, Mr. Smith, and myself, I was at the high school, and we had a little reception afterward. I think the, it was a very interesting time for all of us who shadowed the principal. I was at the high school, but the others were at some of the elementary schools. I think the message that came out was just how dedicated our teachers are, how dedicated the administrators are, the challenges they have for teaching students in an environment where some of the students have difficulties at home. I was truly amazed at a meeting that I went to that had to do with students who are having difficulty staying in schools and the effort that these administrators did to do everything they could to make sure that those kids graduated. It was really heartening. They've bent over backwards. You know, they want kids to do well, and they're making every effort to do the best they can to keep those kids in school. The other was, I was at a meeting of the construction group. Of course, everyone knows the high school is being renovated, and the meeting was pretty impressive in that the gentleman from the construction company said that he had been in construction for over 20 years, and he had never seen a punch list that was completed in such a short time every time they had it. He said it was impressive. The interactions among our staff, Mr. Records and the others, and how they interacted and listened to the concerns of teachers about minimizing the impact of the construction on the teachers was truly amazing. They've done everything they can to make sure that teachers have a quality place to work, you know, knowing that there's changes in trailers and the classrooms, but I detected every effort they had to keep things moving. So it was a pretty impressive day for me. I don't know if Mr. Crisco wants to make a comment, but the others that were there had very positive, very positive comments to say about the teachers, the administrators in the schools that they went to.
Mr. Chair, I went to Achilles Elementary. It was quite an experience. Just a couple of highlights. One of the things that I really did like is, you know, being at the high school, I deal with, you know, discipline referrals, but they have positive referrals. I thought that was so neat, where kids get positive referrals. Good to start them early, you know, knowing that they can, you know, they can do this. The staff were absolutely awesome. Principal, she was awesome. Kids love her, staff love her, and for some reason or another, the kids thought I was FBI. And they thought I was FBI, and by the end of the day, the FBI officer was out on the playfield with them, on playground with them, and it was kind of neat. And the staff, the staff, especially the main office staff, who does an excellent job. They wanted me to come back today because I told them they could have a half a day off. It was awesome. It was really nice doing that.
Mr. Crisco?
Thank you, sir. Yeah, I, like, Mr. Smith, I got to go to Achilles. He was here yesterday. I was there today. What these educators go through on a daily basis is unique. I mean, they're, some of these educators are probably as much of a parent to some of these kids as their actual parents, just because of how the world has become these days, but these folks just don't get enough credit, and they don't get enough time to do the job that they need to do with the, some of the stuff and legislate it to them. But no, it's fantastic. Those kids just absolutely, I didn't see a kid that was just not engaged at all. They were all really happy to be there and excited to be learning something today. It was a unique experience.
Anyone else? Okay. On behalf of the Board of Supervisors, we want to let the public know that members of the Board of Supervisors and county staff met with the leadership of Gloucester Volunteer Fire and Rescue to discuss the funding for a new fire station. The fire department understands the board is supportive of a new facility, and as a result of our meeting, the county will be conducting a request for proposals to look at countywide fire and rescue needs to better understand not only current but future needs as the county is growing. This work will include reviews of location, potential for expansion of current facilities and other capital needs. Representatives of both Gloucester Volunteer Fire Rescue and Abington Volunteer Fire and Rescue will serve on the selection committee for the consultant and will be actively involved in the process. Anyone else? All right. County administrator items.
I don't have anything tonight.
Okay. Scheduled presentations. It's a presentation of resolution of appreciation for Bronco Bayless for his service on the Wetlands Board and the Chesapeake Bay Preservation and Erosion Commission. Okay. Resolution of appreciation for Bronco Bayless for service on the Wetlands Board and Chesapeake Bay Preservation and Erosion Commission. Whereas the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors has learned that Mr. Bronco Bayless has resigned from his position with the county as a member of the Gloucester County Wetlands Board and as a member of the Gloucester County Chesapeake Bay Preservation and Erosion Commission, and whereas it is the understanding of the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors that Mr. Bayless has been a member of the Gloucester County Wetlands Board and Gloucester County Chesapeake Bay Preservation and Erosion Control for a period of 16 years, serving in the capacity of Secretary, Vice Chairman, and Chairman, and whereas throughout his tenure with both groups, Mr. Bayless has demonstrated a keen desire to protect the Gloucester County environment, respect individual property rights, and enforce the laws of the Commonwealth of Virginia and the County of Gloucester. Whereas, his dedication to these positions has required him to attend many night meetings, training sessions, and visual inspections of many properties in question, taking his time away from his family and his private endeavors for the public good. And whereas, Mr. Bayless has been a professional and compassionate member of both organizations, demonstrating that citizen government is about in our community. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors that Mr. Bronco Bayless is hereby thanked for his insightful, compassionate, and dedicated public service to the citizens of Gloucester County through his service on the Gloucester County Wetlands Board and the Gloucester County Chesapeake Bay Preservation and Erosion Commission. Further, be it resolved by the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors that this resolution is presented to Mr. Bayless in appreciation for his public service with thanks and best wishes for the future. Thank you. Want to say anything?
Like yours.
This, um, I really appreciate this. It was, it was a long 16 years, and it was a short 16 years, but I can honestly say, every decision myself and the other members of the board made, always had the health and welfare of the Chesapeake Bay as our number one priority.
Thank you. Thank you. Next item is citizen comment period. We have three public hearings tonight, so if you'd like to speak on anything other than the three public hearings, come forward, state your name and magisterial district. Ms. Cronin?
No, so Mr. Chair.
We're going to give you all 10 minutes tonight. All right, we'll move on. We'll have our first public hearing. A public hearing to consider an ordinance amending Gloucester County Code, Chapter 20, Wetland Zoning Ordinance. Mr. Wilmot and Mr. Landry.
The materials associated with this matter commence on page 19 of your agenda packet. Tonight is your scheduled public hearing to consider an amendment to Chapter 20, your Wetland Zoning Ordinance. Localities in the Commonwealth are allowed to, but not required, to have a Wetland Zoning Ordinance. Gloucester County in the past has chosen to implement such an ordinance, and it's currently codified in Chapter 20. Pursuant to recently passed legislative changes at the state level, localities having Wetland Zoning Ordinances are required to amend those ordinances to make them consistent with recent changes in state law, thereby necessitating your consideration of the ordinance amendment tonight. That ordinance amendment commences on page 20 of your agenda packet. It incorporates the required changes pursuant to state law. It also corrects some spelling errors in a previous version, which I should have caught, which I didn't. For example, on page 22 of your agenda packet, Albermarl is changed to Abba Marl. Creed is changed to Creek. Page 23, Pel Tadra is changed to Pel Tandra. Pel Tandra. Pel Tandra. You would know this better than I. Again, Tuplio is changed to Tupelo, so I feel like I know this. Marshall is changed to Marsh. Page, there are some capitalization changes. Page 25, the Department of Game and Inland Fisheries is changed to the current Department of Wildlife Resources. Page 26 is really the substantive change, which adds an exemption from permitting requirements to a project which involves the construction of living shoreline projects authorized pursuant to Section 28.2-104.1B of the Code of Virginia. And there's another substantive change there. On page 27, you'll notice a proposed change in the fees. Now, that was a, that was a change I proposed, understanding that since I've been here, there's been very little, if any, changes to fees charged by the county. So the current fee charged for a permit is $200, and what I proposed is to change $250 for residential projects, and the current fee for commercial properties is $300, and I proposed a change to $500. Now, you don't have to do that, so tonight you could have the public hearing, and you could not change the fees at all, or you could change them the way I proposed, or don't, you know, some other figure. Just the rest of the changes are basically generated by state law dictates, or capitalizations, or changing the Office of Community Development and Code's compliance to the Office of Environmental Programs. So that's it, pretty much in a big nutshell. We have Kevin Landry, who's the Director of the Department of Environmental Programs for the county, who's here tonight to answer any technical questions you may have. So, Mr. Chair, what I'd ask is that you open the public hearing, unless you have any questions in anticipation of the public hearing, and then we can answer any questions you may have.
All right. We'll open the public hearing. Any citizen comment period? All right, we'll close the citizen comment. Any questions for Mr. Wilmot or Mr. Landry? Is everybody okay with the proposed, oh, excuse me, Mr. Gibson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Wilmot, I was just wondering, how do our fees compare with other localities, and was that the impetus for the revision?
I did not check with other localities. However, I understand that Ms. Steele might have some information in that regard.
Thank you. I don't know the exact ones for this particular, I'm going to mention when we talk about the budget later on, that we're doing an assessment of all of our fees. I think the key point is that our fees have not been raised, I think on this one, it's, Kevin goes, it's 22 years for one set of our fees, or 24 years, another one not since 2008, and then another one even longer than that. So, these fees have not been adjusted at the same time that the cost of living and the staff time and things put into it have gone up in cost. And in general, we're lower than our neighbors, but not 100% on every single fee.
Mr. Crisco?
Thank you, sir. Yeah, just looking at those, that's the only, I don't know why I have any heartburn with it. I mean, my issue is, these projects, when they are brought in and sent through the Wetlands Board, these projects, none of them are inexpensive projects, and, you know, to get an extra 50 bucks or an extra 200 bucks, I mean, I don't see where it's a huge issue, but at the same time, these people are getting ready to spend thousands and thousands of dollars to not only improve their property, but it's also going to improve the quality of the wetlands that is in that area. I don't see a huge need unless there was a reason other than the amount of time since they were set. I don't see the need to increase those fees unless, all of a sudden, we were to find out that a Wetland Board processing fee takes someone 30 hours to process, where we're actually losing money with it. I don't see the need for the increase in the fees, but everything else, I have no issue with.
The fees are not covering nearly the cost of any of the different inspections and things that we do, so I think it's more of a board philosophy of whether you, where you want to fall on that range of capturing a serious applicant, and that they're really know what they're doing when they involve staff time. If there was no fee, that might be an issue. And then on the other end is how much of the expenses that have gone up over the years does the board want to recapture.
Dr. Orff?
The people on these commissions, they receive some reimbursement for expenses, correct? And do they get a stipend or not?
They get paid for the meetings that they attempt.
Okay. So, over the course of the period that these fees have been stable, I would assume that those costs have risen as cost of living has.
At least one time that I'm aware of.
Yeah. So, I mean, I don't have any heartburn over increasing the small amount. I know that, as Mr. Crisco said, these projects do range in the tens of thousands of dollars, but I think we're looking at trying to compensate the people that give their time and effort just to cover their expenses. I don't have any issues with that particular aspect. And I think Mr. Landry's coming up to make a comment.
Is this on? Okay. No, I was just responding to the fee question in regards to salaries for the board members, and it used to be $25, and now it went up to $50 per meeting, for the Wetlands Board, and then $50 for Chesapeake Bay. So, per member, yes. Seven. And advertising costs have gone up significantly as well, certainly.
Mr. Crisco?
How many of each of these applications do we get in a year, Mr. Landry? Between residential, do you have a number offhand? It doesn't matter if you don't. I mean, I'm not sure you weren't expecting that question tonight.
No, we get, we get a substantial amount of, you know, it varies, you know, we had seven last month, and this month we don't have any. So, it can vary. We get anywhere between 70 and 100 a year, approximately.
How long does it take for each review?
It takes, it takes a significant amount of time. You know, we have to go out to the site. We visit each site with VMRC, so they, you know, we go, we spend probably 45 minutes or so at each site. Sometimes we talk to property owners, sometimes we don't, about the projects. Sometimes their environmental consultants are on site, so we discuss with them. Sometimes, you know, there's a lot of work behind the scenes, and certainly Ron can attest to that over the years. There's a lot of work to it, and there's a lot of phone calls that are made, you know, right after the application comes in, prior to the visits, after the visits. Any revisions that have to come in, they have to be loaded into the system and make sure those packets are sent out. There's a lot of printing involved for the packets. The packets are, you know, quite, quite large sometimes. And so, each board member goes out to each site and visits it separately.
How many of the applications are protested by neighbors? You know, I noticed that sometimes, when I've got to VMRC meetings, some of them were controversial ones, will bring out three, four, five, or more people in opposition. Does that happen too much in Gloucester County?
It doesn't happen all the time. On occasion, sometimes it does, but in my experience, the ones I've done thus far, I haven't had any, any opposition.
Okay, any more questions? Okay, there's an ordinance on page, that starts on page 20, with two different, with proposed rate of $250 for residential projects and $500 for commercial projects. Or, there's one that starts on page 20, that we could leave the rates where they are. What is, is there a motion for either one?
I'd like to make the motion to adopt the ordinance that has the rates that are increased.
Okay. Ms. Steele?
Dr. Orff?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
No.
Mr. Nkoshia?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yeah.
Motion carries.
All right. Next item, there's a public hearing to consider an ordinance amending Gloucester County Code, Chapter 20.5 Coastal Primary Sand Dune Zoning and Ordinance. Mr. Wilmot and Mr. Landry.
The materials associated with this matter commence on page 41 of your agenda packet. Similarly to the last discussion and the last public hearing, recent amendments to the state code necessitate changes to Gloucester County, Chapter 20.5 Coastal Primary Sand Dune Zoning Ordinance, to make those, to make that ordinance consistent with state law. So you have in front of you an ordinance which commences on page 42 of your agenda packet, which would incorporate those necessitated changes. The changes also change the current verbiage from the Department of Game and Inland Fisheries to the Department of Wildlife Resources, exempt from permitting requirements, the construction of living shoreline projects authorized pursuant to a general permit. I'm not sure why there was a problem with the indentation, but that won't appear in the, in the published code. It also, again, increases the fee for permits for residential projects from $200 to $250, and for commercial projects from $300 to $500. That was, again, my idea, and I shouldn't have so many ideas. But given the length of time that these permit fees have not increased, and given administration's intent to analyze fees for everything else and come before the board, probably with an intent to increase those fees, given inflation and the number of years involved since the fees were established, I felt comfortable in doing so. The code revisions also, as I indicate, track the necessitated changes by virtue of state law. So tonight, you have a public hearing. Nobody's here. Well, we're all here, but nobody's here to talk. But, Mr. Chair, I think you should open the public hearing so that no one will talk.
I'd like to open the public hearing and ask anybody for citizen comment. Come forward. All right, we'll close the citizen comment period. Any questions from Mr. Wilmot or Mr. Landry? Ms. Cronin, do we have any calls?
So, similarly, in terms of the questions we had, how many applications do you get for this particular ordinance?
In the time that I've been the Chesapeake Bay Program Administrator, we have gotten zero, and in the previous 15 years that various individuals were doing this position, there's been one or two.
It's not taking a lot of staff time.
Only yours to make the revisions.
Well, that's true.
Okay, there's an ordinance. Any more questions?
I have one for, for Mr. Wilmot. Just a question on this ordinance and the last one. Do they appear in our zoning ordinance or just in our list of ordinances?
They're in our list of ordinances.
Should they be in the zoning ordinance?
Some jurisdictions have them separate, like we do, and some jurisdictions have them as part of their zoning ordinance. It's fortunate or unfortunate that the General Assembly has called these zoning ordinances, which would seem to dictate they'd be part of your zoning ordinance, but that hasn't been the case. It hasn't been with Gloucester and it hasn't been with a lot of other jurisdictions.
I was just curious, because of how it is worded, that's why I asked that question.
I wish the General Assembly, if they wanted to be part of the zoning ordinance, they would have said, they would have put it in 15.2, 23, whatever it is, saying that this is your, part of your zoning ordinance. They're required as part of your zoning ordinance. They didn't do that. They put it in a totally different section, and the appeals process is different. If you have a violation of a zoning ordinance or a determination of the zoning administrator, it goes to the BZA. These violations and administrative details go to the Chesbys Bay Board. So, it's really, the General Assembly didn't do as good a job as I would have done in clearly indicating, is this a zoning ordinance provision, or is it a something else provision? Don't call it a zoning ordinance provision if it's not, and that's what they've done. So, yes, it's not clear the way it should be. You have a choice. You could put it in your zoning ordinance, and then it would go to the BZA, and you could eliminate the Chesbys Bay Board. Or you could keep it the way it is, separate, and it goes to the Chesbys Or you could keep it the way it is, separate, and it goes to the Chesbys Bay Board.
That may need to be a future
Yeah.
topic for a retreat, probably not this week's retreat, but a future retreat.
Yeah, I think that gets it a lot more complicated than what we have tonight. So, we may want to stick with
Yes.
what we have.
No, I agree. I just
Yeah, I agree.
With the wording, with the wording, reading it, I thought, that's a question I need to ask, and I probably should have sent the email when I noticed it, but I didn't, I didn't get a chance to.
All right, there's an ordinance on page 42. I don't think we need to change the fees since no one's applying for this. My two cents.
I would kind of agree with that. Yeah, I, it's, yeah, I would agree. So, I'll make a motion that we adopt the ordinance to keep the fees the same.
Second. Okay. My only, well, I can bring up this question. Aren't we just making it more difficult for staff with having two different fees with similar items?
No.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Nkogia?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yeah.
Dr. Or? Motion carries.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Landry.
Thank you. This might be futile also, but a public hearing to obtain citizen input on the proposed fiscal year '25 through '29 capital improvement plan.
So, maybe this will serve as a reminder, as much as it will be a public hearing presentation. So, are you ready for me to begin, Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, the topic for the public hearing is our capital improvement plan recommendations for next year, starting July 1, 2025 through '29. And as typical, the discussion includes the process and things that we go through in our timelines, et cetera, all in the packet that's available for the public to view. And our objectives remain the same, is to adopt capital improvement needs, aligning with the board's priorities, and prioritizing those needs, evaluating the funding options, et cetera, and then presenting a plan that the board can adopt, and then appropriating the budget with your budget approval, and then executing the projects. The process, we continue to make minor adjustments, improvements, and so we have a fillable online form, and we go through a scoring system that includes the planning commission's participation. We have the department head score the projects and the budget team, and we tabulate and come up again with the recommendations for tonight. As far as the scoring goes, there's two categories that are looked at, need and impact. So, under need, and both are on a one to five scale, it considers the public demand, aging of equipment or a structure, the legal requirements that may be in jeopardy, safety implications, things like that, that generate a need. And then the impact, also rated one to five, we consider things, what impact will it have on the public? More public being able to use something, to lowering taxes because of governmental efficiency, or at least keeping things at a reduced cost, potentially a positive economic impact on either the county as a whole, or an environmental impact, and things like that. Then, after the scores are tabulated, we look at the funding options. How can we fund all these? And they are listed in our CIP manual for, as a reminder to the department heads as they go through, and, and they would identify if they think they're grant funds, or they know of grant funds, or if they have donations, or any kind of other funding option to consider. This year, we did change our inflation cost and made that clear, and also, I think, what projects a better five-year plan for the board to really understand the financial impact by going ahead and putting the inflation at the bottom of each of the years for the cash projects. We didn't assign them to each project because that can vary. Some may go up higher faster than others, but we did a 4% overall inflation factor, and that was based on the last five years of what inflation rates have been averaging. We, in the past, have been using 2.6 for a 10-year, but we're kind of in that timeframe of needing to raise that. The next slide has the funding capacity to potentially address these projects, and that's looking at the unassigned fund balance. And these are the same figures that you've seen several times, where it identifies what is unassigned fund balance, and then what the limits are according to the board's policy of what has to be kept in the fund balance. So, you have a 14% lower limit and a 16% upper limit. And for the purposes here, we've identified the upper limit of 2.615, 655, being available, 2.6 million, being available to go towards these projects. And then, for information's sake, to make it faster math, we put in what the 15% limit would be, or what a percent would be. The five-year, if someone pulls up last year's five-year and looks at it, we'll see a lar, a much larger total sum, and that is because of some of the moving around of projects. So, there's a decrease in the debt finance project, projects, and an increase in the cash projects. And before mentioning, again, the things that were requested, wanted to just refresh the board's memory and the public's memory of what's being done this year that you all approved funding for, so we're executing now. The Beaver Dam Floating Pier, which is almost ready to go out to bid, they're finalizing the scope on that. The renovation of the Ark Park Basketball Court, which is complete and open to the public, and now includes pickleball courts there as well. The replacement of the jail console, we're, I think, in contract signing mode. And then, the annual request for the school bus replacement, I'm sorry, I don't know exactly where that is, but they were provided the funds, and I'm assuming they've moved along on that project, and probably did so as soon as they were able to. The Achilles Safety Vestibule was done at the end of last fiscal year, so it was really pulled forward. And then, the school bus air conditioning retrofit for the buses that were young enough to retrofit them, and that was completed, and that's done. The projected inflation totaled up to 3.5 million additional dollars as we look at the span of time for this, this term. And the Woodville restroom building, the school HVAC, and the TC Walker Soffit and Brickwork were all moved from capital debt financing to Pago. And that was based on some comments that we received during the bond referendum process, and also just trying to kind of realign what we think could be done in a year's time with cash versus having to debt finance and pay interest on it. We have several new requests that were added this year that also add to the reason it went up. And one is, really, it's, it's a carryover, but it's additional funds for the Carriage Court project, and the E91 UPS battery backup, that's to keep the computers and all that 911 system going in the time before the generator kicks in. The elevator replacement and refurbishment program, a new roof replacement and refurbishment program. Schools asked for marquee signs, a sidewalk replacement, and the Gloucester Point Beach Project, which is with match funding. And then, a few of the items were also removed from the last five years. The landfill improvements, which is a $700,000 figure that was in the last several five-year plans, has been removed because we are doing so much better there and do not anticipate having to do a massive retrofit to, around the landfill. And then, our Wi-Fi replacement and network switch is ongoing right now. So, we categorize the projects that are requested into two categories, the Pago, or cash, something that we can pay for in a year, and the debt financed. This is the slide with all of the 25 projects that are listed in the Pago, and it's kind of hard to see, but that's where that 29 million plus figure is down at the bottom. That's what it totals to over the five years with 6.3 million in next year's budget. It's also a little bit difficult to tell on these slides, but a couple of the cells are grayed out, and that is because they have a, their own funding account, so they would not need to be funded with general tax dollars. And that includes the generator for Building One, which we will only do if we receive the grant that we would be applying for. And then, the historic building preservation has its own reserve account. And then, the lockset replacement, we would be looking to the school's security account for that. This is a shorter list, so this is just the FY25 Pago projects, which, again, totals to 6.3 million. And you can see that after those reserve accounts with this funding, as well as the fact that the schools believe they're going to be able to fund that sidewalk replacement with current FY24 building funds that have to be spent by June 30th, they're part of the ARPA funds. So, the net, then, is 5.639. All the things would be in the budget, but whatever is funded, but they would be, the ones that have their own funding would be shown on, on both sides. This is a composite of all of the ranking of the planning commission and the department heads, the budget team, and the average scores, and then there is an X in the column for county administrator recommended, and those, again, that have alternate funding. And you'll notice that the recommendations run very similar to the scores going from high to low. Yes, sir?
Ms. Steele, I like this slide a lot. Is it possible to add another
Column?
column with the amount associated?
Absolutely.
So, we don't have to go back and forth from one page to the next?
Absolutely. Be glad to do that. It's a good point. This is the list of the recommended projects and how they total out, and where we would stand on the net figure, again, considering the revenue that we have. So, the amount drops down to 3.5. So, there's items not funded, and that's why it goes from the 6 million to the 3.5. I included for the board's consideration, and we've talked about it a little bit, and I'm sure we'll be talking about it more in the future, both individually and maybe at the retreat or other meetings before the final budget is put together, is looking at the, the net figure that there is not enough of unassigned fund balance. So, how do we rectify the recommended projects that we should be doing with what we have? And there are numerous ways it could be looked at, obviously dropping projects, more projects out, and that's part of solution number one, is to look at putting in $2 million of unassigned fund balance. And I would really recommend that the board not want to, or not utilize all of the fund balance because of things that can happen, and also for planning for the following year. As we're getting tighter and tighter on our projections of what revenue comes in, and we don't have the ARPA funds and things like that that we've had in the past, we don't end up having so much leftover or unspent money at the end of the year that goes into this account. And so, we could end up being very close to what was budgeted on the revenue that comes in, and not have funds for the following year's Pago. So, my recommendation would be to not spend more than 2 million. And with that, that would, in order to get down to the figure, this action would require pushing back the HVAC for a year, and then also pushing back the, the generator, which is, the generator's not the one I was mentioning for Building One. This is the one for the courthouse itself. And then, pushing back the ADA improvements, and these are in parks, and they have been this way for years. We still are making strides. We've made many improvements. We need to continue them and finish them up, but it would be waiting another year. And then, the little bit that would be left over, $27,000, just to throw that back into fund balance. Another option would be to stretch the use of the fund balance, and instead of using 2 million, use 2.5. And if that was done, then we could push back the HVAC and provide more funding to the buses, because the recommendation for, the recommendation for the buses is not nearly what they asked for. It's a reduced figure. And then, the third option would be to look at the, the reserve policy that the board has, and instead of doing 16%, drop to 15%, and that would take the, the funding over the amount. I mean, you could obviously go 14.1, I mean, 15. whatever to get closer. But if you wanted to meet the school's needs on buses, then that would give an opportunity to add funds there. This is a list of the projects that are excluded and would be pushed back to 26, and then what the impact of that would mean. So, out of the request for 25, 2 million plus, the anticipated inflation impact would go on, and right now, FY26 includes 5.1 million, so it would take it up to making FY26 7.3. And I am not sure we'll have, my hope is that we can always spend 2 million on Pago, but we haven't been able to in the past. There've been some years where we've only spent as low as 700,000, and other times, we spent around the 2 million. The debt funding, there were over $24 million in requests, and again, that's down if you look at last year's five-year plan. And reminding of why of that, one, we funded the 3.8 million that's in the radios for this year, and the school division removed the restroom construction conversion. And then, I, as I mentioned, moved some, about approximately 6 million to the Pago category. And then, the high school sports complex was reduced due to proposed construction in one year. So, they've moved everything into one year, which it costs less than if it's spread out over time, which it was in last year's budget request. And then, the Gloucester Point Beach Project gets a little bit confusing, but it's a modified, and it's based on the grant opportunities, so it's actually an increase in request, but it's got the revenue to go with that. And then, with the inflation with these, we don't put them in the bottom, we put them per project because of the cost of them, and that we do so few. And I am not making, I'm not recommending any debt projects for next year. So, it all would be Pago. And then, switching topics over, oh, I'm sorry, this is just the, for your reference, again, of when debt will be retired. And then, I was going to switch over to the utilities' capital needs. We didn't ask the utilities committee to rank the projects, again, because they had just done that work with the 10-year plan and talking with them about that. There are, there were minor modifications that were made to get this presentation done. I can tell you, there are a couple more that you will hear about at the retreat. It's not anything earth-shattering, but it's making things more accurate of what needs to be done next year, as well as in the following years. And all that's proposed are the Pago, no debt financing at this point. So, there are three pages of projects, and so it makes it a little bit hard to see the bottom line because it keeps on going. There are, there is one project, let me back up, there's one project that is in FY25 that we're recommending alternative funding for, which is the Development Fund, and that's $560,000 for the Forest Hill Avenue water line, and that would provide that connection, that we loop that we don't have right now. And the rest of this, again, will be, is, is like the 10-year plan that you've seen, but it'll have a few edits made to that. This is our timeline. We're down to that February 6, coming down to the wire. We'll have the final CIP recommendation along with the operating budget, and the whole balanced budget will be presented for you on March 4. And I'll be meeting with board members between now and then to talk about kind of where we are on things. And I, I know there's not many people And I know there's not many people here tonight, but I welcome input at any point if people want to email or call with comments or questions they have about the CIP.
And I think going forward too, Ms. Steele, there's an item that hasn't been listed on here that we have woefully underfunded the last several years, and that's the County Administrator's Contingency Fund. Because there's an item on here that we've not been doing simply because of its location, and it's not needed to be torn down, but we could wake up tomorrow and have a notice or something happened, and we have to tear that building down. And I think that we have to have enough money in your contingency account to cover these things. I mean, we look at all these 4% inflation, that's the new number that we're using, and I don't think there's enough money in there. So we, going forward, we're going to have to make sure that that line item is accounted for when there's any excess unassigned fund balance, that we make sure that account is at a level that can handle a catastrophic event.
I appreciate that, and I would like to include with the March budget, an update on where we are with the contingency fund right now. There's one figure, I would have already provided it, but I was waiting on one figure to have a final number on, and that is the funds that we set aside for the grant writers at the PDC. And they've now hired someone, their salary should be set, and we should be getting what our apportionment will be for that, and then I can give you the rest of where we are, because it has been hit on hard this year, much more than in the past. Okay, any other questions? Thank you.
All right, we look forward to meeting you individually or in pairs to go over the budget. We'll move to regular agenda items. A request from Virginia Health Department to execute the statement of agreement for fiscal year 2024 for funding and services of the Gloucester Health Department. Ms. Steele and Ms. Callaway.
Good evening. So this evening, we are, we've provided a copy of the new agreement for, between county and the Virginia Health Department. This agreement is something that we do annually, does come later than we would prefer. However, it has now been reviewed by our county attorney and staff as well. They're requesting $470,000, which it was incorporated into the fiscal year 2024 budget already. And something else notable in this agreement is they are asking for what they call carry forward of $8,369. What that is, is just money that we provided in fiscal year '23 that was unspent, and so they're asking, can we keep this money? And they would like to use it towards the General Assembly mandated 2% salary increases. So that's in this agreement already. However, if that's a concern with you, then we can certainly modify that. Otherwise, there's a resolution on page 60 of your board packet.
Questions?
Move adoption of the resolution on page 60.
Just have one comment, Ms. Chair, for me?
Yes. I would like, if possible, for staff to work with the Health Department a little bit. In the last two years, I have had more phone calls about the Gloucester County Health Department, which we don't have one. And they have become sort of an issue at times, so much so that there's people on the Middle Peninsula, because the offices are all intertwined. They fondly refer to the Virginia Department of Health as the Virginia Department of Holdups, because they've held up more projects that shouldn't have been held up for reasons because someone turns a piece of paper in, they send it back for a comment, they turn it in again, and then they come back with another bite at the apple. So can we just work, you know, hey, we're working with you guys, we need you guys to be a little bit better in the sandbox with the citizens of the county. That's my only comment.
And just to clarify, that there is the environmental section of the Health Department that deals with septic, in case the public was thinking about medical.
It's all, yes. May I?
Every year I try to get them to give me this agreement. It started July 1st.
This is frickin'.
Correct. I couldn't agree more.
All right, the resolution to page 60.
You have a motion and a second.
That's right.
All right, Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Dr. Worf?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Okay, the next item is a request for additional fiscal year 2024 appropriations, no local dollars, Ms. Callaway.
All right, so this item has two separate resolutions. So the first resolution is regarding local assistance and tribal consistency funds. So that is a fund that was created by the Department of Treasury. It is ARPA funds. And the county received notice back in December of 2022 that we'd be getting this money. We did receive $100,000 that the board authorized in January of 2023. Since then, the board has appropriated $50,000 for bonuses for the sheriff's office, and $30,000 for lighting at the court circle. So this request would take the remaining $20,000 and put it towards two necessary items, one of which is $15,250 to repair sidewalk at the museum, and the second is $4,750 to partially fund a replacement rescue boat for Beaver Dam. Oh, I left my note at my seat, but just to give you an overview of what happened at Beaver Dam, back in November, the park staff showed up at Beaver Dam and found the boat was sunk. So since then, they have gone back and forth with other options to make sure that they can still safely help people on the, at Beaver Dam if needed. But that boat was 17 years old, and we got insurance money, which essentially bought a new motor. So they're now asking, pooling funds together, some savings that they have in other sources for parks to try to get this rescue boat. It would be an aluminum boat, which will handle the stumps and such at Beaver Dam much better. But that's, this money will fill the gap that's needed. So that resolution is on page 76.
Five.
Five and six, yes, you're exactly right.
Motion to approve, Ms. Chair. All right, Ms. Steele?
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Dr. Worf?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The second resolution, it, request is for grant funds from the Virginia Port Authority. So this grant was $1.434 million that was awarded to Gloucester County in 2023. That was for the dredging at Aberdeen Creek. So we have spent $54,728 to date, and we are partnered with the Middle Peninsula Planning District Mission on this project. So we did not carry over any of those funds. We didn't want to put the full million dollars in there, not knowing what the outlook was. But I have worked with the MPPDC and received notice that they expect they'll spend $75,000 this fiscal year. So this request is to appropriate that grant funding, as well as put it into the Aberdeen Creek dredging project. And there is a resolution on page 77.
So move, Ms. Steele? Any questions? All right, Ms. Steele.
Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Dr. Worf?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is Proposed Ordinance Amending Gloucester County Code 21, 21-AC Limiting Aberdeen Wharf to Commercial Use Only. Mr. Wilmot and Mr. Baines.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The materials associated with this matter commence on page 78 of your agenda materials. You have in front of you a proposed ordinance, starting on page 79, which is recommended by county administration to limit utilization of the Aberdeen Wharf site to commercial fishermen or commercial enterprises only, not allowing it for recreational or other purposes. There are, there were two ways this could have been affected. One would be by resolution of the board, but that's much more, less formal, not as enforceable, and wouldn't necessarily necessitate advertisement. And I thought it was important that the public be notified that the board was intended to consider limiting utilization of this wharf to commercial purposes only. So what you have in front of you is this ordinance, which would limit utilization of the Aberdeen Wharf to commercial use only, and it would prohibit recreational or other non-commercial use of that wharf. It also allows, it gives teeth to the enforcement possibilities. If you limit something by resolution, you don't have the ability to really enforce that. So I thought that it was important to notify the public that you all were thinking about this, and that if you're going to intend upon doing it, that I'd be able to assist the county in enforcing this limitation. I do note, however, this is not an ordinance which necessitates a public hearing. This is not a public hearing. I thought that if people were intended upon speaking on the matter, they certainly could have attended and spoken during citizen comment period, which has already been held tonight. So it's not a public hearing, and you have that ordinance in front of you. Thank you.
Any questions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did receive a phone call from a gentleman who opposed this amendment. He voiced the opinion that it should be for public use as well, and so I just have some questions so I can better understand this issue. So first of all, regarding the funding, is, am I correct that 75% of the funding was from grant funds and 25% from county taxes? Is that accurate?
Yes, and that came from the Port Authority. So this money came from a grant with the Port Authority.
And then the commercial use of the wharf by watermen, is this for launching their boats, bringing in their catch? Can you go over what they use it for and why this could possibly create conflict with the public?
Absolutely. So this is a wharf. So here is where large commercial boats, large, watermen that have medium-sized boats dock their boats. So they go out in the mornings, park their vehicles in the parking lot, hop in their boat, and they go out and do whatever it is, shellfish, crabbing, and such. When they come back, they offload onto these piers. The old pier, and one of the reasons we were so concerned is some of these people come down with box trucks and back onto the pier. So it was in such bad shape, we're afraid there was going to be something falling into the creek. So we've built the entire wharf. It's two L-shaped wharfs, it's not connected. We designed them because the watermen we watched working down there could stack oysters and bushels six to eight high, or crab pots. So we designed the weight of that wharf to take those commercial loads versus being something that you might otherwise do. So it's larger, it's wide enough that you could drive a truck on it, but we put concrete pylons in so they won't, and then we've got it so they can walk through with, you know, we'll see, they're concrete, but I'm guessing at some point in time, we may see how creative they get. We put, we put the Jersey Walls in front of it to stop them from doing it, and we'd go back down and they'd be gone. They would literally drag them out of the way to get their trucks closer to the boats. The boats, when they come in, after the first one docks and unloads, the next one pulls in next to him, and at night, it could be up to five to six boats deep tied up to each other, moored to these wharfs overnight.
And how many boats do you estimate use the wharf every day? And is this a seven-day-a-week operation, five days?
Most of the time, it's seasonal. So during the season, they're out every day trying to do it. A lot of times, they have to be in early. So, you know, one of the questions would be, gosh, those guys are all back by noon or 1:00, then, you know, the wharfs open the rest of the day. They leave a lot of their equipment on this wharf. Like we said, crab pots are there during the season, other things they literally leave on the actual wharf as they're working, coming and going.
And is there a history of conflict between the watermen and the public at this wharf?
Absolutely not, but because of the, so while we were rebuilding this, we had to get an MOU with the neighboring landowner, that's another old seafood house, and put up a floating pier to keep these watermen being able to do their jobs. So it's so busy that even when we were trying to rebuild it for them, we had to make accommodations for them to get their seafood off their boats and into the trucks to get it to whoever they were selling it to. So it's a very active wharf on the York River. It's probably when you hear about the ones along the York River, it's one of the easiest ones for them to get out to the oyster grounds or where they're crapping.
Are there other docks available to the public nearby that they could use?
There are. I mean, if you're talking about, you know, open to the public, there is one down at Williams Landing, so, you know, that's down there where Crew Road is, and you go down to the end of it. It's on Timberneck Creek. There's a couple others that, am I wrong?
That is, that is, that is not a landing. It's a, I went there on, the other day to look at it, and that's not, it cannot be used by the public, that's.
Maybe not to do kayaks and such, but it's a, it is a large T-pier.
No, there isn't.
Which one am I?
The one I know.
The one, I thought at the end of Williams Landing Road is a VDOT one. They just paved down to the landing. It's got a boat ramp that is, you know, broken concrete, and it's got a T-pier that has five commercial boats at it. And again, it looks like people could walk down, you could do something you wanted there, but they've got commercial boats tied up overnight there. They do have, we're putting lights up at both of these, of these locations, so they're lit at night, so if the boats are, people are coming and going from their commercial boats, they've got some lighting there. But in general, you go up to Kappa Housak, there's a small beach there for people that want to do those type of recreational things, but that's one of the things that Ms. Steele's talking about.
John's Point, which we did have a conflict issue there, and that is a recreational location, but we had a waterman that we had to push on because he was blocking the commercial, I mean, the recreational fishing. And there is also.
There's one at the Paropa Tank.
There is one at the Paropa Tank. There's one, Page, right down off TC Walker Road.
Payne's Landing.
Payne's Landing, thank you.
Payne's Landing, yeah.
I know, and then, one more. Oh, the Oliver Landing. So that's really not a landing that a boat can go up, but people do fish from there.
That was one where the lady clipped her car over on top of the, yeah.
There's a Captain Sinclair launch site, too.
Right.
Sure. There's multiple places, but this is the only one down at the end of Aberdeen Creek Road. There's not another one, there are some properties the state owns, but they don't have any of that developed yet, so there's no other places on the end of that road.
My concern is, every place that was mentioned is probably a minimum of a 20-minute car ride from that Aberdeen Creek Pier, because I've driven it. From where I live, from the Payne's Landing Road Pier to Aberdeen, it's every bit of 20 to 25-minute ride.
As we've talked through some of our strategic planning, even though we're a waterfront community, we have very restricted public access to our water. So you're absolutely right. It is one of the things that even though we have so much of a shoreline, we don't have a lot of public access.
And so we want to restrict it more.
Well, we just want to make sure that the commercial people, because it is one of the ones that's used the most, that it's safe. But like you said, if y'all decide that it's safe is, that, you know, parents are with their kids when they're down there crapping or fishing, and they need to make sure they don't get hurt, that's a responsibility of that, of that family.
Ms. Steele, go ahead.
I was going to say, if the board doesn't want to do this, I would suggest that we come back with additional ordinances for that pier, as we've done with other piers years ago, that had issues, because we wouldn't want unsupervised children down there.
Right.
And right now, there is no restriction. Somebody could go down there. It's not a park where we have a current ordinance. It has been a commercial area for pretty much all of time, looking way back into records.
I met Mr. Lee, who lives there, and his family gave the land to the county, and he lets you know every time you go down there. So he's very.
So there's, you know, there's maybe a feeling like, oh, we don't have enough area for recreational fishing, and I would not disagree with that at all, but there's also a feeling that we don't have enough area for the watermen, and that what used, that they used to have is not available as much either. And so it's really up to the board, but I would suggest that if you want to keep it open, that we come back with some additional ordinance suggestions that would be safety-minded.
Dr. Worf?
Yeah, I wish we could do that. I mean, I'd hate to say to a guy that comes down there with his son or daughter and wants to put out a fishing line during a Sunday when, yeah, I went down there and I looked at the way boats are stacked up. So you can only have one stacked five times, okay? So there's certainly room on either side. And, you know, given the limited access that citizens have to the water. And the other is that, one of the things I've noticed, that when I go out in my kayak to these places, I am surprised at how many people just drive. to these places, I am surprised at how many people just drive up and either just sit there and look at the water, spend some time, and it's very soothing. And it's, it is interesting. They just like to go out and look, or maybe walk out on the pier. I would hate to have us to restrict that. So I would like to think we can come up with language that emphasizes our interest in supporting watermen, but also the recreational aspects. I mean, it's not like a lot of people are going to be out there. But I'd like to at least let people know, if you want to go out there and take a walk, I mean, like I said, I went out and I walked in the dock, and I looked at the way things were set up. And it's complicated, you can't do a lot out there.
Right.
But if someone wanted to put a fishing line just out for an afternoon, and a lot of people like to do that sometimes.
And like you said, there's no boat ramp, so it isn't people going down into the water and saying, here that's above the water, but you could certainly fish off of it, crab off of it.
Yeah, you're not going to have recreational boats putting themselves there next to the commercial guys. So I don't think you're going to deal with recreational boats. I think it's just that, you know, for the people that live down there, if they want to just walk down or drive down and throw a fishing line out and catch a croak or whatever, you know, to me, that's part of, makes life fun.
So what was the total cost?
Of, off the top of my head, I can't tell you. It was over 400, I don't remember.
Let's go 400.
Yeah, it was over 400,000.
Well, let's just say four for ease of math.
Yep, all right.
So the pier was damaged, the exist, the old one was damaged because of watermen driving their trucks.
No, no, this, so...
But, but they did drop one.
We were worried when they were driving out on it. So in 19, I'll tell you how old I am, in 1988 or 89, I designed, I was an engineer at that time also, redid that one. We didn't take any of the pilings up. All we did was put cross bracing on them and put a new deck on it. At that point in time, it made it so the watermen could still get onto it, but I didn't have anything to stop them, so they started backing their trucks down. You could find a pickup all the time down on it, and sometimes they'd even back fuel trucks down onto it to fuel these boats. Over time, those posts had just rotted in the salt brackish water, and we had pictures, we went to the Port Authority, that literally like every other piling was missing. And the tops where they were backing out and putting on the brakes, the six-by-sixes everything was sitting on, had rocked. So that we knew at some point in time, this was going to fall into the creek with whoever was on it, especially if it was anything commercial. A truck, a fuel truck, or a box truck was going to end up in the creek, so we stopped them from doing it. So that was after it started to fail.
But then they pulled it away.
Oh, but that did start, and we're trying now to keep them from backing onto it, but we've made it easy for them to load up.
But my point is, we're spending $100,000 of the county's money.
Yes, sir.
And then the majority of the citizens in the county can't use it.
It is the board wishes you can, we can do whatever you'd like to do. We're absolutely going to do what y'all ask us to do. We're just trying to make sure that from a safety standpoint, we knew the commercial people here, when they're there, they're rocking and rolling. They're not any little fishing.
Depending upon the season and what they're catching, their boats might not even be there, because they've moved to other places.
That's correct. We tried to schedule when we were going to be repairing that between the seasons. It's more like November and such. We didn't do it. We had to do it this spring, or we did it after they started back to being out in their boats, but we had a window of like six weeks we could have tried to do the work. We didn't make, they're there the rest of the time, but there is a time they move their boats, and you're right, there are other locations on the York River that they could go to, but I guess this one's the most convenient for where they're trying to actually do their work in the world.
It's free.
Yeah, but you've got to remember, we're also getting ready to dredge that whole creek just off of this. That's the one that we got the Port Authority money and what Ms. Calway got, the money that we're working with, the planning district, who's our physical agent, they're going to be the ones who actually manage the project. So we're getting ready to clear that out, because boats are getting caught on the shoals there. So we're getting ready to clear it so that these, we'll probably get more use out of it once they don't have to worry about going in and out at high tide.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Smith.
The gentleman that I spoke with, he made perfect sense to me, you know, at first, and, you know, I was for this, I must tell the truth at first. But then he asked me, he said, well, Mr. Smith, don't we pay taxes? I was like, yes, sir, you do. And they pay taxes, it's their money that's paying for this. And listen to Mr. Payne, they're not, the citizen that goes down there that dropped the fishing line or crab line or whatever, they're not the ones backing their boat on the...
No, the big box truck out on that pier.
They're not the people that did that, so we shouldn't punish them for what other people have done.
You know, we can come back, like you said, with additional ordinances, and then the piece of property next to it used to be, you know, a seafood processing plant. It's not right now, but if there's more activity down there, we can come back and say, hey, look, now we've got a little more of a concern that it may be traffic more than it is just that. But we can provide you with some other alternates versus being commercial only. Anything else? Thank y'all.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
You need not take any action on this. You don't have to table it, because there's no motion. I caution, however, when we agree that we can come back with more ordinances and restrictions, I have no clue what they would be. So, you know, if you're going to limit it, how are you going to limit it? When are you going to limit it? To who are you going to limit it? What purposes are you going to limit it? I don't think that's going to happen, because logistically, I don't, just don't see. So if you want me to do that, you have to tell me what to put in.
I think, you know, personally, again, I don't think you're going to see recreational boats parking there. I think you're going to see primarily commercial people. I'm just saying that to allow people who want to walk to the pier, use it for other reasons other than, you know, their boats, because with the commercial guys, there's going to be no room for them, because the way those boats are, and the big boats, well, you have big boats, it takes up essentially the slot. You can't put anything else out there. But there's still room on either side for someone who wants to go out and do that. So can we write the language that emphasizes that the docking is for commercial boats only, and that the pier can be used by the public, you know, for other purposes? Is that possible? Or can we just leave it alone?
So, Mr. Chair, I was going to suggest that we work up some draft, and obviously run it by the county attorney to see if it makes sense, that it's enforceable or anything like that, before we bring it back. But it makes me think about how we have yield, courtesy yields on our multi-use trail, that it may be that, and it could be that it would become a policy, or it could, depending upon what the county attorney says, qualify as an ordinance, but to ask for people to yield to commercial fishermen who are loading and unloading. I mean, we just had an incident with two pedestrians at another county facility that were both thinking they're right, and, you know, it was, it was trying to use property in two different ways. And you don't want somebody going to blows. And so if the sign was there that said that recreational users must yield to commercial water, or however we'd say, watermen utilizing the facility, then they would know, they need to back off, because there could be, I don't think many people go down there. I don't really want to advertise, it's about a 10-foot-wide narrow road. I don't think a lot of people want to go down there. But if, if they did, and they stood their ground, that could cost, and as far as the taxpayers paying, I kind of want to chuckle inside, because there's a lot of activities and things that the county pays for, whether it's economic development or something, that a minority of taxpayers use. We've heard that argument in, almost in the flip-flop of this one. So I think we're getting it loud and clear, y'all don't want the full restriction, and we definitely want to do what you want. And we'll see if it makes sense to work with the county attorney. If his advice is leave it alone, we'll leave it alone. But I do know that we have ordinances in place for no dropping children off of 13 or under at Beaver Dam Park, as an example, so that nobody does just leave their kid, and especially next to a water source.
Next item is board direction on the budget preparation. Ms. Steel, what are you all thinking for Ms. Steel? I know we haven't met with her yet, she's working on a budget. We, she's presented the CIP tonight. I mean, I think the main thing is, is that from my point of view, there's not going to be a tax increase this year.
But I think for the citizens, they should see us really looking carefully at the budget and the details that go into it, not just a pro forma, this is what, you know, we approved based on you presenting to us. So I think, as we've done in the past, two-on-one, and then we have our subsequent meetings and see how we can tweak it, if we had to, without raising taxes on things that we think are relevant. So, you know, as we did last year, I think it was a good model to work with. And, you know, again, no tax increase, and I assume we'll keep the tax rate as it is this year at what, 58 cents for $100, that's a set value. So I think we just proceed as we have, as we did last year in that process, two-on-one, and then move forward with, you know, people coming to discuss their budgets. For example, one of the things I would like to see, or like to hear from, during my campaign, a couple people came up to me and want to know, again, why people don't pay personal property taxes on boats. It would be nice to hear from our industry how things are going with them. I know the place on 17, they're just doing fabulous, but it'd be nice to hear how the other marinas are doing, and how this reduced tax rate on boats, no personal property, has made a difference in their business. So maybe having them just come to talk to us about what's happening in the industry would be really good, just to hear from, and for the public to hear, since we do get since we do get questions about that 000000.00001 penny on boats. I don't know how you guys feel about that.
Mr. Chair, I totally agree with that. I've been asking for that for the past seven years. And I keep hearing, it's a study somewhere. It's out there. I haven't seen it yet. I sure like to see something.
Ms. Steele?
I think we can make contact with the marinas and ask them to come and talk about the economic impact that they're seeing in the county, how many people are staying and getting off their boats and eating and paying meals tax, how many are driving around and using their borrow cars and shopping and things like that to the overall economic impact, or how's the dollars go through the community. But unfortunately, the study, study that was discussed was from a professor from Vemsey, retired some years ago. And I'm not aware of any official study that even other localities have done to compare to.
Yeah, I'll check with someone at Vemsey's. But yeah, that study was done a long time ago, and I don't think it was repeated. And I don't think it's been done for other localities, but I'll check. I do know that other localities are either dropping their tax or changing the way they do the personal property tax. So it might be worthwhile to at least have some information about our adjoining counties on what they do.
Mr. Chair, is it possible the board could be provided with a figure that would estimate the amount of revenue the county would receive if it were properly taxing these boats, taxing these boats, I should say? That would probably be helpful.
So we'll talk to the...
Probably not. Right. I don't know if you can get that number, Mr. Wilma. Because the number of boats that would leave this county for another locality that has a zero cent boat tax would be astronomical.
Well, I understand. I'm just saying, based on current boat occupancy, how much would the county...
But are you looking at the marinas? Or are you looking at boats owned in the county?
All.
Are they even tracked?
They should be.
Well, they're not on the personal property tax.
I believe they are still tracked, because I, and I may be mistaken, but I believe this is something I've heard the commissioner say, that they still have to go through this exercise.
I thought my trailer was the only one. Your boat doesn't appear, because it doesn't have a taxable amount. That boat is still registered to Gloucester County. But the number that you would provide us, based on the population of boats at point in time today, would be vastly different at the number of boats on January 1, 2025.
I just think it'd be helpful if I were on the board to know what that figure would be, understanding that some people may vacate.
And the beautiful thing is, a lot of these, well, a lot of boats, some of the larger boats pull up in here the week before January 1. So they're here on January 1, and then it goes back to their house or the other marina that they pay to keep the boat at, because it's cheaper to keep their boat closer to them. But I have been at several of our marinas, and the amount of boats that are in Gloucester County now versus seven years ago is quite a large number. I mean, the gentleman down the road has expanded his business. If you want to get the marinas here, you call him. He'll have every marina person here at a budget meeting, like we did at TC Walker a few years ago. And I can make that phone call tomorrow.
Yeah, let's, I mean, I think it would be good for the public and for us to hear, because I have seen, like you have, how that change in our boat tax has made a difference in the operations of the different marinas and his business. So I think it's good, again, for the public to hear, because they may not hear otherwise.
Sure. I don't disagree. But every year for the seven, for seven years, and I'll get this phone call in the next two weeks from a couple of neighboring county administrators asking me, because I have the relationship with them through the PDC, you guys bringing back the boat tax, our marinas have, we're at 30% occupancy, because our boats have left our marinas, because they still want to charge a boat tax.
Mr. Chair, if we do have that information, at least if somebody asks us, why is it 00000001? At least we can tell them. So that's why it's helpful to have that information.
Just remember, it's not free if you own a battleship. You'll have to pay taxes.
I think another comment, just over the, you know, the budget in general, that Dr. Orth was talking about the two-on-ones and the types of discussions. And it made me kind of think about, sometimes people might not realize how much background work goes in between the board and the county administrator before the budget's actually presented. Because as we are meeting and talking, the budget team is working on reshaping that budget according to the things that you all are expressing. So even when the county administrator's budget is proposed, it's already, there's already been some discussion. I mean, it's my goal to bring something to you all that is what you wanted, as well as what our recommendation is. So I don't see it as a negative thing if things don't drastically change. To me, that's a success that we heard you and the recommended budget is what you were looking for. And I do think this year is going to be really tough. Known going into it, no tax increase. And with the inflation that we're experiencing, that we're paying on our bills, and that our software companies and others have gone up, it's going to be tough. So there will be some, you know, some cuts that I wish that we didn't have to make. But we'll be discussing that. And I just kind of wanted to throw that out there so that the public might understand that there are meetings before the meeting of where we're exchanging and talking about priorities. And also, finally, just to refresh, I will have, or state again, that I will have information on the fees and charges. And a little bit more in details of how much it would mean and what the recommendations are in comparison to others, and that'll be at the next meeting.
With one of those, would that be related to the Gloucester Point and Gloucester districts? Because I know we've talked about those rates for quite a long time, as to whether we do anything with them or not.
You're talking about the sanitary district?
Yeah.
No, we were, what we've been prepared to, and we'll look back at that now. But what we were prepared, preparing to do is to talk to you about sort of all the fees that are charged on the second floor, whether it's building and environmental and zoning and planning.
Mr. Chrisco. Well, we have the discussion this year on the ad valorem for the mosquito district. Are we trending in a better direction than we have been?
We're, I think we're doing pretty well. Now, we did have some years where we didn't have to buy as much, because the mosquitoes weren't there. The pretreatment is working much better than it used to, and so that's changed things. And then, of course, we're on our new facilities, so we had a little bit more expensive expense getting that set up. But it's good.
All right. Let's go to board appointments. I'm going to go down the list on here first. Board of Building Code Appeals, Mr. Ambrose and Mr. Miller would like to be reappointed.
I will make the motion to reappoint both, Mr. Chair.
Social Services, Deborah Gudier and Doug Vaughn would like to stay on.
I will make the motion for Ms. Gudier to stay on. And if y'all don't mind, I can do the same for Mr. Vaughn, for Mr. Bizani.
Please. Cleaning Green, Matthew Williams. All right. Historical Committee is vacant. Petsworth. Okay. Local Emergency Planning Committee.
I'll make the motion to reappoint Mr. Gazelle and Mr. Pike.
All right. Dr. Orth, there's somebody on the...
Though I know we're working on changing the bylaws that will dictate the membership based on district or lack of district. But in the meantime, since we haven't changed the bylaws, Mr. Herzak is from the Abbotton District, and so we now have someone representing that. And I think he would be a good person, yes. So I nominate him.
And then Wetlands Board in Chesapeake, Chip Nykirk would like to be reappointed.
And we have Ron Owens.
Let's, we've got a couple.
Yeah, we've got a couple others potentially coming for the vacancies, for the alternate and the other vacant. Or not, I don't even know about Petsworth yet.
We don't have him yet.
Okay. But there's a couple other for the countywide alternate.
Is there a...
I'll go back here. I don't know if we have them coming. We got it tonight to vote on, right? Why are we waiting? The others are not here. We don't see any other names. I don't want to do that.
Mr. Bizani had brought forward...
Mr. Bizani's not here. I don't want to do that. I think...
But that would be Petsworth District.
I think. Just get one off.
The county, oh, sorry, sorry.
The county why. I don't want to wait to do that, when we have a person that's interested in it. So it's a reason why we're waiting.
Can, I know he was a former county employee. Can someone speak to his qualifications and support for him fulfilling this vacancy? I'm not opposed to his appointment. I just want to hear more about him.
Yeah, I mean, somebody...
The ones that I reappointed, I had spoken to about being reappointed. And this is a new, or a new vacancy. And I haven't spoken to Mr. Owens about it, but I have spoken to the other gentleman that, about it. And he just, he does not appear here. That's why we didn't vote on it last time either, because Mr. Owens was here last time on this list.
When will these other people show up? I'd say let's wait until the next meeting, and if it's not there, let's do it.
Too much in a row. They haven't showed up, so we're going to wait.
But we've sat there with the Utilities Advisory Committee for, Happington for the last year, and haven't had anybody.
But we have a person, is what I'm saying.
Well, if, do you want to nominate him?
I do.
Okay. Let's go, what I want to do is going to be do a little change of pace. Can we have a second for the Board Building Code Appeals?
Second.
Board Social Services? Clean Green?
Second. No, I did, I'm sorry, I did the vote.
I'll make the second for Mr. Williams.
Okay, Local Emergency Planning? Utilities?
Second.
Okay, for Mr. Nykirk?
Do we have the motion for Mr. Nykirk?
Yes.
No, we didn't.
Okay, would somebody like to make a motion for Mr. Smith? Okay.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion for Mr. Owens. Is there a second? Okay, all of them that have motions and a second. Let's vote for those, please.
All in favor?
Let's do a roll call.
Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Dr. Orth? Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Chrisco?
Yes.
Okay.
No, sir, nothing.
Not happy to be here?
I'm happy to. I'm going to go down to Aberdeen more.
Have a beer?
My kayak, um, I have a littler one.
You keep acting up at home, that kayak's going to beat your littler. Boards and Commission reports?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I have one. Mr. Chrisco. Our Middle Peninsula Alliance, which is our Regional Economic Development Authority, I'm in the process of getting the next meeting scheduled. We received word from our legal counsel and our friends in DC from the IRS that we are actually able to conduct business again. So there is some funding available to, from the state for that alliance, and we will be getting together before the end of February to start game planning on how we're going to receive those funds and how we're going to spend those funds and bring some more economic development to our region. Supervisor discussion? There's no closed meetings. There's only one other.
In Saturday, remember?
Oh, yeah. Well, we've got Saturday's retreat at 8:30. Wait, hold on one second. What did Savannah say?
She indicated it was up to the board, if you wanted to come back on the 20th. She's happy to do that, to do the board picture finally, or...
Which would you rather do, have the board picture Saturday morning or the 20th?
Oh, I didn't ask her about Saturday.
Oh, the 20th.
Saturday, I want to be comfortable.
I asked her about the 20th or March the 5th.
Take a shower. All right, only one item?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion adjourned, I mean, meeting adjourned.